I know. I'm sad, exhausted. Yeah, I wish I could. I wish I could. How's your weekend?
Good.
And how's your weekend?
Good.
Excellent. So, two good weeks, a week for Mel. Yeah, it's okay. It's not his stuff?
I do, yes, no. I called away after we spoke. Yeah. She absolutely didn't shoot.
They hired three shooting.
I saw that's what we did.
She doesn't start until May 5th. Sorry, you're here. No, off you head by then. Me too, man.
Do you do any kind of turnover or what?
What's that?
Do you do any kind of turnovers?
Good.
Turnover, you know, transition.
Yeah, take transition.
Yeah, good. Bring them out, show them on. So just for a... Run them dry, just on top of the hill. It's a real simple thing, you guys don't do.
That's a little hard. I thought that was an attention.
Tonight's regular city council meeting on April 1st, 2025 will have the Pledge of Legions.
Unless it can be... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll just take this opportunity to mention that the mayor regrets not being able to be here tonight, so I guess I will fill in as best I can. This is the meeting for April 1st, 2021. Meeting protocols, if everyone would please turn off your cellphones, be respectful, take personal conversations into the lobby. As a first order of business, we have a proclamation for the First National Bank in Trinidad Recognition Day of May 2nd, 2025. And I'll just... Roll call? Oh, roll call, thank you.
Devono?
Here.
Shu?
Here.
Thurman?
Here.
Trigell?
Here.
Ogletree?
Here.
Lanson?
Here.
Green.
All right, back to the proclamation of First National Bank. Office of the Mayor proclamation Trinidad, Colorado. The First National Bank in Trinidad Recognition Day, May 2nd, 2025. Whereas, one year before Colorado was granted its statehood and the city of Trinidad was incorporated, the First National Bank in Trinidad was established on April 16, 1875, setting forth its charter to serve those who blaze their way into the untamed west along Santa Fe Trail. And whereas, the First National Bank in Trinidad's doors were opened with commitment to serve the community and its citizen with a dedication to excellence as a financial institution. And whereas, over the past 150 years, the First National Bank in Trinidad has established itself as a cornerstone of this community by supporting the arts, philanthropy, historical preservation, civic engagement, business and education, and local environment. And whereas, the city of Trinidad desires to recognize the First National Bank in Trinidad for its outstanding legacy responding with excellence to the needs of the community from the earliest days of cattle ranching and coal mining to modern era of technology. And whereas, the First National Bank in Trinidad will host a 150th anniversary celebration for the entire community on Friday, May 2nd, commemorating the event with a collector's anniversary book as a free gift. Now, therefore, I read on behalf of Karen Grego, Mayor of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, on behalf of the entire City of Trinidad Council and the city, do hereby proclaim May 2nd, 2025 as the First National Bank in Trinidad Recognition Day. The City of Trinidad, and I urge you to join in, recognize this institution in its commitment to serve Trinidad with excellence for 150 years. I don't know if anyone's here to receive this tonight, but it's quite an honor. It's always interesting to see what you learn at city council. The second proclamation is for... The second proclamation is for Trinidad State College. This one's a little longer, I think. The City Council of Trinidad, Colorado, and the Board of Los Anamos County Commissioners offer this joint proclamation in April, 2025. Trinidad State College, a century of excellence honoring our legacy, shaping our future. Whereas, on January 17, 1925, Senate Bill 403, which provided for the creation of the Junior College of Trinidad, Colorado, was introduced by Senator Samuel Frudenthal in the Colorado General Assembly. And whereas, Senate Bill 403 was signed by the Colorado Governor on April 20, 1925, thereby establishing the two-year college. And whereas, the college was housed in the buildings of Trinidad High School until 1935, when it was relocated to the remodeled Tilson Academy. And whereas, since that time, the campus of the college has expanded to include 16 permanent structures on 17 acres of land, and in 1993, expanded its service area in southern Colorado with the addition of the Valley Campus in Alamosa. And whereas, student enrollment at the college has grown significantly over the years from 37 students in the fall of its first year of operation to over 2,300 students annually. And whereas, originally offering first-year college courses leading to an arts and science degree, courses offerings have since expanded to include career and technical training. And whereas, renowned gunsmith P.O. Ackley played a key role in establishing the nation's first formal gunsmithing program at Trinidad State College in 1947, launching courses that have since evolved into a comprehensive gunsmithing degree program. And whereas, the Trinidad State Invitational Basketball Tournament is Colorado's oldest and longest-running high school basketball tournament, originating in 1937, bringing together generations of athletes, coaches, and fans while fostering sportsmanship, competition, and community spirit. And whereas, the college joined the Colorado Community College System in 1968 and collectively with its sister colleges values learners first, educational excellence, a culture of belonging, bold and creative leadership, community advancement. And whereas, Trinidad State College has experienced periods of worldwide depression during the 1930s, war in the 1940s, returning military personnel in the 1950s, booming college enrollment in the 1960s, social unrest in the 1970s, college expansion in the 1990s, the tumult of the COVID pandemic in 2019 and 2020. And whereas, Trinidad State Junior College updated its name in 2021 to Trinidad State College to better encompass its educational offerings, including celebrating its first Bachelor of Science in Nursing graduates. And whereas, thousands of Trinidad State College students and athletes have proudly worn the colors blue and gold, competing in Trojans in baseball, softball, basketball, volleyball, soccer, wrestling, football, golf, track and field, cross-country, esports, and robotics. And whereas, Trinidad State College will carry forth its strong tradition of academic excellence into the next century and will continue to provide its students the knowledge, skills, and experience to their educational and personal goals. Whereas, the vision of Trinidad State College of driving shared prosperity in our communities will continue to be guided by the principles of accountability, integrity, collegiality, and respect, collaboration, inclusion, and belonging. And whereas, the first two-year institution in Colorado, Trinidad State College, will celebrate its 100th anniversary in 2025. We extend our congratulations and commend its leadership, faculty, staff, and students on establishing a history and tradition of educational excellence. Now, therefore, be it jointly proclaimed by the City of Trinidad Council and Los Anamos County Board of Commissioners. Then there's spaces for signatures, and it's the proclamation for April, 2025. So, congratulations to the State College.
If you want a photo op or something, that we need to get everybody's signatures, and the mayor will have to sign tomorrow. So, we can... You can, or you can wait till tomorrow. I think a photo op is...
Will acquiesce to Councilman Shu's request and sign it now, so that we can skip tomorrow?
Well, thank you so much.
Congratulations, oh. After reading all that, I'm discovering potentially why the mayor may have missed tonight.
That's right. That's right. And then, the only other thing I would like to say is, please be invited, all of you, the whole community, and certainly, City Council, to join us in our Founder's Day celebration on Friday, April 11th, starts at 11 o'clock, and you'll have lunch at the newly renovated Freudenthal Library, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, the following items are on file for consideration of council. Item two, since we have a roll call out of the way, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
So, vote.
Shu Frank, a second?
Second.
Councilman Devono? Vote?
Devono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trigell?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Lanson?
Yes. Item three, policy items and staff reports?
Nothing.
Item four, petitions or communications oral or written. The public comment section offers an opportunity for any citizen to express opinions or ask questions regarding city services, policies, or other matters of community concern. Any agenda items that are not part of the scheduled public hearing. Citizens have five minutes for comments. This time limit was established to provide efficiency in the conduct of the meeting and allow equal opportunity for everyone wishing to speak. An immediate response should not be expected as issues are typically referred to the city staff for follow-up or research, and are then reported back to council and/or the individual who initiated comment or inquiry. Written materials for presentation to council must be submitted to the clerk as the speaker approaches the podium. We have a total of three speakers tonight. Mr. Rosetti concerning citywide projects. You'll have five minutes as timed by Mr. Downs.
Thank you, Mayor Protherm, and council. Your last meeting, you had an update on citywide projects, which wasn't much of an update. First two projects that were talked about, all that was done is some trees were cut. And if you remember, I... Staff came about four months to you with a bunch of projects. Nothing else was mentioned in the projects, kind of like, you know, the water main out here on Church Street. Nothing was said about the walking trail on Santa Fe Trail. Mr. Shu, how's those lights coming on Garfield? Huh? Nothing. It's just, he gives a project, and there's no... He doesn't give no information. Also, I'm going to say something here, just keep this in mind. If you remember, a few months back, council took a vote on the insurance plan for the citywide employees, and they did away with the number five by the request of city staff to save the city eighty, ninety thousand dollars. Just keep that in mind. The last thing the city manager talked about was Central Park. Of course, that's my pet peeve, so we're going to talk about that a little bit right now. First thing he talked about was, well, he talked about it, but about the AstroTurf being its own project. That is true, it was its own project. But if you remember right, he didn't do any investigation on it. That project was never brought to council. That project was never advertised. That project was never put out to bid. It was brought to council one night, kind of underslept into everything. Council was thinking it's part of the city Central Park project. It was voted seven oh. Yeah, we'll pay it. Had nothing to do with Central Park. Was just slipped out, totally illegal. So then, after that, he started talking, and again, he pulled out the tombstone handbook of rules and policies which are just made up so it can make the city look good, that the project was done, 95% done and a punch list was given. When that's done, the days for liquidated damages end. I've talked to quite a few contractors on the street, they never even heard of that before. And you all know I got a copy of the plans, I got a copy of the contract, I got a copy of every work order there is. There's nothing in there that states that anywhere in any of the paperwork. So it doesn't take a real good attorney to take that to court, it's not going to stand. He owns the liquidated damages. Last work order, that project should have been done August 16 of 2024. So, you know, kudos to the contractor, made $135,000. Now let's go back to the city employees that couldn't get their plan for eighty-five, ninety thousand, but the city's willing to give away $130,000. Is that fair? I don't think so. I don't think it's right. He did, contractor was able to open up a business in a city building that the ex-city manager said was supposed to be for art or tourism. Well, it's for doors and windows. I guess the tourism board, if they like to put in their brochures, if you're on vacation looking for doors and windows, stop by the Collins, we could maybe help you out.
One minute.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
But I just, you know, we only have one more meeting with the city manager. Thank God, I think the city's moving in the right direction, that you guys made the right choice. That's it. Thank you.
Next is Roy A. Miller, please, for homeless camp area, I believe, is the...
Well, they just removed all the tents again and tore everything out and had the part of her go out there with a little bobcat and tear all the tents down there. About every six, eight months, we do this. I don't see where it accomplishes anything besides, you know, moves the homeless around. I can't understand why we can't put together like a little area for them to go. I mean, there's... I mean, where that old smokehouse was down there, I guess they can't build on that property, so that's excellent location. Somewhere that's kind of in the city, not out in boonies where they want to put them, because none of them has any kind of a vehicle. I got some bicycles, if that. And the problem's increasing. I go to Pastor Clay's luncheon every Sunday, help out the best I can, and there's more people showing up all the time. Families now, little kids showing up. Now, I know none of you ever, ever been out there, but believe me, you should go out, get out of your comfort zone, and come on out there on Sunday at thirteen hundred hours. I'll hold your hand and make sure no one attacks you, okay? I'll take care of you. If you want to see the homeless at night, go over to McDonald's around nine thirty, ten, ten thirty. They're all there, a lot of them. Some of these people have been here for years, have been here longer than I've been here, wandering around. I mean, some of the homeless, they get these attitudes going on, they hate life, they hate everything. They destroyed a couple picnic tables over here in Central Park, I'm aware of that. If you do set up some kind of a place for them to go, or some kind of maybe a location to put the tents up, I'd be more than willing to offer a couple days, a week, to assist, or maybe guard the place, so no one tears up the porta-potties and all that kind of stuff, you know? I'd be willing to do that. If anybody knows how to set up a tent city, it's me. I spent 26 years in Marine Corps. I spent eight months at Camp George in the middle of the desert, waiting for the politicians to decide what they're going to do with Saddam Hussein. I remember that quite clearly. It was a really great time, sitting there on our butts. But anyway, I just think we got to do something, because the problem ain't going away, you guys are doing nothing to solve it. I know the city's broke, no one's got to explain it to me, they're putting that expensive sidewalk in that's an ocean requirement and all that, that's cost a big bunch of money, the marijuana funds ain't coming in like they were. I understand that. We're all paying 8.4% taxes, I understand that too. But the problem ain't going away, we got to do something, okay? And some of the cities have done something, Alamos has got something going on, and we're not doing anything. And the problem's not going away, it's just going to get worse, especially with the economic environment that's coming on us. Yeah, the guys running these carlets and stuff will be out there in the breadlines too, pretty quick. But anyway, it's just my personal opinion. But that's all I got, and if you need me for any help or on putting this thing together, I'm more than willing to volunteer some time, okay? I know how that's supposed to work. All right?
Thank you.
It's not going to cost that much money. Dipsy dumps here, a couple porta-potties, and maybe a water buffalo. You know, and some sanitation, you know, that's what else it's going to take. A plot of land to put it on. Maybe somewhere to, if it gets wet, you know, we can have it a little bit high on the ground, maybe put in some loaded dirt or something. It's not going to cost that much money. It's not. All right? I know you guys are broke, I got that part.
Thank you. Thank you. The third final person tonight is A.C. McWhorter on the Police Department?
Yes.
Only need five of the top ones here, ten of the others, so they didn't have to share. I'm Anthony McWhorters, known as Mac. I am a retired TPD police sergeant. What you're going to get a copy of is the essay that's been on the board on the side of our training room for the last seven years. Went up in March of 18, it's still there. I'll take the opportunity to read it to you, you don't have to wait for it to get there. "There is no way to arrest a potentially dangerous combative suspect. The police are our bodyguards, our hired fists, batons, and guns. We pay them to do the dirty work of protecting us. The work we're afraid, sorry, too afraid, too unskilled, or too civilized to do ourselves. We expect them to keep the bad guys out of our businesses, out of our cars, out of our houses, and out of our faces." Emphasized at the bottom, "We just don't want to see how it's done." This was written by Charles H. Webb, PhD. I'm pretty sure I found who Charles Webb was in a Google search back in 18, an English professor out of University of California, Long Beach. It's certainly a persuasive essay. A lot of people really would agree with it. It mirrors the sentiments of many people in the public. But the police never should agree with it. It's an invitation to street justice, and that it's up in our training room, or it's no longer my training room, that it's up in the training room certainly indicates that it is approved of by the administration from 2018 to the present. It's potentially a catastrophic liability should officers ever be sued for violating people's rights, or there be allegations of police brutality. Remember, the bottom line of this is, we don't want to see how it's done. It's an invitation to do things without the body cameras being on, without writing it down in the reports. It also represents a fundamental misunderstanding of the role of police and the rule of law in this country. So I have some real issues with this being up on the board. "Just this last month, I overcame my reluctance and checked too late to see if the chief's position was still open. I learned that this election was turned over to a third-party outfit, and they will almost certainly operate on a default setting and find the most experienced and qualified person for the job, someone who's worked themselves up progressively, more and more responsibility and skills that they've acquired. The first problem on this is that it's most likely an outsider climbing the ladder. That will be the most qualified. They may be gone before the average city manager comes and goes. Instead of training up officers to advance and replace their superiors as they become more experienced, they may well encourage their potential competition to leave. That would be the example of Jay Harrison in 2017 and 2018, who convinced me to leave, Brendan Berry to leave, and Sarah Sino to leave." The big one of all my points here is, it's not skill sets, but values, and the ability to communicate and instill those values, that is the essential role of a chief of police.
One minute, sir.
"The council needs to clearly communicate its values. What sort of chief do you want found and leading the department? For myself, I insist on treating everyone with respect and giving suspects as pleasant a rest as they would allow. These are not universal values in police work. I don't think any of us saw COVID coming, I certainly didn't. There's currently talk about what's the next Disease X, and what will that do with how our liberties and rights are treated. I never thought I would see churches forcibly closed, or people forcibly stopped from going to churches. I never thought I'd see businesses closed for lockdowns, a word that comes out of prisons. We lost a good officer, Josh Bowen, who would not be engaged in that. I never thought I would see Americans seriously give consideration to or respond positively in a... to the idea of detention camps and forced vaccinations for people that would refuse vaccinations. Certainly, people were coerced back in 2020. I didn't think I'd see serious challenges to the Second Amendment here in Colorado, yet there's a bill on Governor Polis's desk today." So, I suggest that something that is of vital importance for this council is to determine what values you want promoted by your police departments and provide direction to those who will be determining who your next chief of police is. Thank you for listening to me. I do appreciate it.
Item five is council reports. We'll start with Councilman Thurman.
Nothing at the time.
Nothing in my meetings this week.
Nothing from the Los Anamos County Veterans.
There's some news on arts and culture. The staff, thank you, was able to find some money for them, so they're going to be able to do at least another whimsical seating, which is going to be probably similar to one that's out at Central Park, and people seem to have really responded well, and they're very excited that they have some money to work with, and they're doing a good job. I'm also their liaison to Creative District, and it's really getting rolling under the leadership of Veronica Mays, who's doing a spectacular job in helping them to build out their board and understand their mission. They're going to be really helpful with some... A festival that's coming to town later this year that you'll hear about probably later called Fancy Spider, and there's a women's art film festival that we're going to have as well. So I'm excited about their involvement in all of that. I've been attending meetings in Denver for some time, putting... helping put together the strategic plan for Colorado Creative Industries, and that's being rolled out this week. So, that's the news on arts and culture.
Thank you, Councilwoman McWhorter. I have just a very short update. We did have a meeting of council of governments, most of it pertaining action items, or pertaining to Warfino County, as it is a bi-county agency. One of those of note was, there will be soon a grand opening of the Senior Center in Walselberg. That was a new build using ARPA funds that were gained from the federal government from COVID. That's going to be a really nice addition for the city of Walselberg. If you have any interest up there, maybe someone to attend, a date will be forthcoming. If you have any interest up there, maybe someone to attend, a date will be forthcoming. We are still anticipating state and federal funds to increase uh, local bus barn for increased uh, traffic for our bus. And hopefully that'll see ridership increase. That'll, that'll be good for our area too. Lastly, we're still pushing back on the consolidation of Department of Transportation planning regions. That is at, at this point still up in the air. That is my update for this. So item six would be the consent agenda. Item A would be approval of the regular meeting minutes of March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Special meeting minutes of March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Approval of special event permit application, malt venus, venus and spirituous filed by Mount Carmel Wellness and Community Center at two twenty-five North Commercial Street on May twenty-third, June twentieth. Is that June twentieth or twenty twenty-five?
June twentieth.
Okay. And thank you. July twentieth and September, oh, sorry, June twentieth. My apologies, Kim. And September sixth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, item C, approval of temporary modification of premises permit filed by Mount Carmel Wellness and Community Center at nine eleven Robinson Avenue. Item D, new retail marijuana product manufacturing facility application filed by ISO ninety-nine LLC at three thousand seven ten Freedom Road, set for public hearing at six PM on May sixth of twenty twenty-five. The approval of the bills in the amount of one million, six hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars and sixty-nine cents. And finally, item F, approval of payroll, March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five to April eleventh, uh, twenty twenty-five in the amount of four hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars and nineteen cents. Is there a motion? So moved. Shu makes the motion as second?
Second.
Councilman Trahill for the second and the vote.
DeBono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trahill?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes. Public hearings, item A. We'll open the hearing. Public hearing for consideration of an ordinance granting local landmarking designation to property described as OTS block sixty-six west three forty-five. Really bad at legal descriptions. The first one hundred and forty-five feet of lot two, OTS block sixty-six, west one hundred and thirty-six feet of north one half of lot three, city of Trinidad, Los Angeles County, Colorado, otherwise known as three oh eight South Chestnut. Who's going to present on that, Mike?
Um, here we go.
Look, Kevin, look, Kevin.
Um, I'm going to go ahead and um, this one is, was presented by Frank. Um, and he is asking for us to landmark it. It is given to us or the information he gave us was that it was built by John Conkey as the architect. The house was originally owned by Ben Springer. And um, it was built in nineteen oh seven. So it does reach our um, historic value. It's been in front of HPC to get its designation and was given it some approved for you guys to go ahead and decide if you want to approve it. If you had any questions, I can ask anything.
Is there any questions from council?
I don't have any questions. I'm excited about it.
No question.
Don't have any questions.
Being that this is a public hearing, is there, we open for public comment?
If you can show.
If, if there is anybody from the public to make comment, they can turn. Hearing none, this, uh, the hearing will be closed. Uh, item I, the second reading of an ordinance granting local landmark designation to the property, property described above, also known as three oh eight South Chestnut Street. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Councilwoman Shu, I'm sorry, Ogletree and the Councilwoman Shu for the motion and second. Uh, item eight unfinished, finished business of which there is none.
None. We need to go call.
Oh, I was seeing if you're paying attention.
Good one.
Well, we'll call the vote. Thank you.
DeBono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trahill?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes. Item A, unfinished business of which we still have none. Item nine miscellaneous business, item A, consideration of appointments to the Trinidad Urban Renewal Authority Board. At this point, I will take motion.
So moved.
I mean, I'm sorry, I'll take a nomination. Thank you, Councilman.
I'd like to make a motion, uh, make a motion to appoint Mark Welch to the, Tura?
Tura.
To the Trinidad Urban Renewal Authority.
Second.
Um, a motion and a second. We'll call for a vote.
DeBono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trahill?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Grago. Sorry.
I entertain a motion for a second person to fill the Tura Board.
I move to have Mike McNeil included in the Trinidad Urban Renewal Authority Board.
Uh, thank you, Councilwoman Ogletree. I'll entertain a second.
Second.
Thank you, man. Thank you. Hearing that, is there, we'll just call for the vote.
DeBono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trahill?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes. And there is a third spot available. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion for Gary Thomas.
Hearing motion for Derek Thomas from Councilwoman Shu. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman DeBono for a second, call a vote.
DeBono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trahill?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes. I just want to publicly thank the people that have applied to this and um, it's a, it is a lot of work to undertake and something necessary for the city. So, so thank you for that interest. Item B, consideration of lodging tax advisory board funding request. Mr. Valentine is presenting for that.
Um, it'll probably be me. I don't believe Marty is here, but um, I will present. Thank you, council. So as you know, we only have two members to our lodging tax advisory board. So they haven't met, but we have had three applications for funding requests. So um, those three applications are the Caveman Music Festival at Monument Lake Resort for five thousand dollars. Fancy Spider Music Festival, um, to be held in Trinidad at various locations. They requested the full amount of ten thousand dollars. And a funding request made by the Rocky Mountain Women's Film Shorts for two thousand dollars. The um, per our strategic plan, we created a, a committee, a staff committee that is comprised of city manager, finance director, tourism manager and the liaison to the Altap Board. And so we sat down with these requests and you know, based on, on the budget that was submitted by the Altap Board, these fit within those categories. So we're sending this forward to council as an advisory that um, we approve. The, the committee approved funding these entities for their, they met all the requirements set forth by, by the application. And I, I will try to answer any questions you have on, on these events. I think Councilwoman Ogletree already mentioned two of them that they heard about at the Creative District meeting. You know about the Caveman Music Fest, so.
Any, uh, any questions from council?
Um, I don't have any problems with them either.
With the Fancy Spider, I interviewed Curtis Wallach last week. Fifty-plus bands in various locations throughout the city. Seems like a pretty profitable event.
Quite a, quite an event. He's held it, finally understands six years um, in a different location and he's moving it to Trinidad to help support and tourism in the community. So it'll be, I think, five? Five venues that they're, they're going to be playing.
Different genres. They're going to have rock music and they're going to have country in one location and then probably blues and maybe jazz and another genre.
Yep.
You're going to have a lot of interviews.
I know.
Yeah, you do. Yeah, you do. It's fine.
The Women's Film Shorts is part of a larger women's film festival that's in the springs and film festivals are something that I think people generally would like to see in Trinidad. So I think it's a good foray to support them.
Um, Mr. Valentine, you are potentially Councilwoman DeBono. Do you guys know how, how many days? Cause I, I heard it was several days. It's the three days. Oh, three day music festival?
Yep.
And um, are, are any of the venues going to be the art space? Do you know?
Space to Create, Main Stage, Sister Binding, Wallace Garden, the Stock House at the Marketplace, uh, the Wow Hotel and Trinidad Lounge.
I, I have heard a little bit about it. I, I think potentially, you know, it'll bring a good amount of people to Trinidad and I think that that's a, that's always a positive thing.
Uh, those are, I'm sorry for interrupting. Those are the ticketed stages where they're charging for. Non-ticketed stages are at the AR Mitchell Museum, Mutiny Cafe and Musa's. So they're going to have bands going for, it's for three days in downtown. It's quite exciting.
I think, I think it's a worthwhile endeavor. With that, I'll entertain a motion for consideration of lodging tax advisory board funding request.
So moved.
Councilwoman Ogletree?
Second.
Councilwoman Shu, Councilwoman Shu for the second. And the vote?
DeBono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trahill?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes. Item C, first reading of the ordinance repealing and reenacting chapter four, animals of the code of the city of Trinidad, Colorado, to better align with pack food rules and regulations and to better manage animal functions and setting a hearing date for consideration of said ordinance at six PM on May sixth, twenty twenty-five. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Oh, I need an introduction.
I'll introduce.
Thank you. Introduction, right. Councilwoman Trahill, uh, motion?
So moved.
By Shu?
Second.
By Ogletree? Thank you. With that, we'll call for the vote. That's, that's probably a good idea. Is there, is there any questions past what we've done in work session or Mike, has anything changed since?
I will say that a lot has been added per council's suggestions and Audra has worked on it, Les has worked on it and Pam is here. She, she worked on it as well. So if you have questions or.
I just think it, it is a hu, it was a huge endeavor and I want to thank all of you who worked on it. And it, I think it's going to make, yeah, a huge difference in what people understand the laws are pertaining to raising animals in Trinidad. And it's very readable and well organized. I just want to thank the staff for everything you all do.
And if I could please, Mr. Mayor Protoni, I just want to say what you have before you. You have highlighted the changes that have been made since the work session and the, the things that, that council talked about. Also the increasing of the number of animals under limited conditions that has been incorporated into this. And you have at the back of your ordinance, a permit application that was done for people who were wanting to exceed the allowable, the, the, you know, wanting to go to, you know, more animals if they qualify. So those four were also. One last thing I, I would like to say, and that is at the last regular meeting, I was given a question about what is citable on the camping ordinance? And I kind of botched my answer on that. So what I would like to tell you, and I, I did send you a memo on that by way of email, but I just want to tell you that, that section one eight of the code, the code of ordinances provides that anything that does not specifically have a penalty in the code of ordinances is made citable or punishable by ordinance one eight. Otherwise, everything that you have in here and of course, the next item that you have, nineteen, talks about some of the specific offenses under the animal code. But anyway, I just wanted to say that, you know, in kind of a delayed response to that question. That is what does that. Anyway, that's, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Uh, we've had a introduction, motion and second, so we're ready for the vote, I believe.
DeBono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trahill?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes. Item D, first reading of an ordinance submitting section ten dash five municipal court. Appointment, oath, salary, powers and the code of the city of Trinidad to adjust fines and fees associated with dog and cat violations and setting a hearing dates for consideration of said ordinance at six PM on May sixth, twenty twenty-five. Is there someone to introduce?
Apologies.
Ogletree, uh, motion?
Second.
Thurman and second?
Second.
Uh, DeBono, is there any discussion or um, discussion or concern from staff?
No, here to answer any questions you may have.
So what, the only question I had is that what's highlighted in yellow here is what's changing?
Correct.
And the rest of it is what's already there?
That's correct. And those are the new enhanced penalties for those as requested by council.
I think it's fitting, yeah. Any further discussion? With that, we'll have the vote.
DeBono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trahill?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Item, oh, yes.
I didn't say yes.
I did, I did say yes in my head. Item ten, reports by city manager and city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Protoni and council. I only have one report. It'll make somebody happy, but I, when this was going on, I'd already had vacations scheduled from April eleventh through the eighteenth. So I will be out of the office then and I will miss the April fifteenth meeting. So this will be my net last regular meeting. I will be attending the, the next one, but Tara, Tara will be here for the next one.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Valentine and for, for your service, for bringing us through that period of time. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Downs?
Thank you, Mayor Protoni, members of council. The only thing I wanted to report on is that Ms. Marshall has signed her contract. The, the contract is fully executed, so it will be, everything is on its schedule. I just, I didn't realize this was going to be your last regular meeting when you said you were going to vacation. So thank you, Mike. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you.
You're a wonderful man. You're always here for the city, man. We appreciate you.
My pleasure.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Downs.
Thank you.
Item eleven, executive session for a conference with the city's attorney by the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, part four, so part B on Opera House. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Shu?
Second.
Second? Second. Trahill? If you'll call a vote, thank you.
DeBono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yep.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trahill?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes. We'll just give a minute to clear.
Yep.